We're not going to be live, but we'll be recorded. Best I can do, the best I can do. What I'd say.
Is this okay to do so it sticks out to people when we pull it off?
Yeah.
Um, because. And they would. So you started doing it to them as well.
Yeah.
Also, it helps you remember to change their number.
Yeah.
They'll just make it up.
Yep. Let's see if it's.
Yeah, yeah.
At once, and the, oh, the light will come on. Okay, so it'll be red at the top. Yeah, there you go. It'll be low. So Lynn, on your microphone right here, you just push it kind of once. So you don't have to hold it or anything, you just kind of.
Luke Combs.
Present.
Lynn Larson.
Present.
Have quorum.
Great, thank you. Before us, we have the minutes of July 7th, 2021. I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Mr. Wagaman made a motion. Oh, hi, Ryan.
I think the mic was muted. I didn't, I couldn't hear anything when you guys were doing call, real call.
Okay, okay. I think Mr. Larson beat you, but we'll have a second by Mr. Larson. So any discussion, changes? We have a first and a second, any changes? Seeing or hearing none, all those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, hearing none, motion, the minutes passed as written, thank you. Any changes to our agenda tonight?
No, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, public comment, anyone wishing to speak? Come right up here and state your name and the city you reside. Welcome. A little bit, the microphone is on.
Main thing I wanted to talk about tonight was owner occupied residents, whether it's condos or. That makes apartment houses that replace owner occupied houses to be built. Not, I don't think, in the interest of Lakewood. I think people take care of the property better if they own their own property. Apartment houses breed a lot of people that don't seem to care about much of anything beyond their door, if that. Also, most of the apartment buildings that you collect residential properties in order to build, you're getting rid of residences that are locally owned and citizens of Lakewood to make an opening for anybody and everybody that comes in. The owners of those apartment buildings are rarely from Lakewood. So as a consequence, you're becoming a city that's almost very few owner occupied residences. I think the last percentage I saw was 68% non-owner. And if you counted businesses, because it's rare that many of the businesses are locally owned, I think that percentage is far higher. So I'm a firm believer of people in Lakewood owning Lakewood property and taking care of it. And that's the main thing that I'm interested in talking about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Thank you, appreciate it. Seeing or hearing, looking, there's no one else in the public tonight. We'll close the public comment.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, we do, we do have two attendees.
Oh, excuse me.
On Zoom.
Okay.
I will allow Amelia Escobedo to speak if she wishes.
Amelia, were you wishing to speak on public comment? Uh, here. How about James Dunlap?
Mr. Dunlap, do you wish to speak?
No, 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 I'm just watching.
Great, thank you. Amelia, again, one more time, just.
She says she's just speaking tonight, I'm sorry, just listening tonight as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for listening in, appreciate it. So at this time, then, we will close the public comment. There's no public hearing tonight, and we have no unfinished business, so we'll move right to new business. Mrs. Spear, let's see, what do we got?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. What you'll see in your agenda tonight are three items, which are all very closely related. So I am just going to walk through a single PowerPoint presentation that will cover everything. Please, if anybody has any questions at any point, that's fine to interrupt me as we go through these. But we'll be talking about follow-up from the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendment process, which just recently concluded at the City Council, the 2022 Comprehensive Plan Amendment cycle start, and then also how both of those are changing a little bit, the Planning Commission's work plan for the rest of this year into 2022. So I'll share my screen here. Sorry, one second. There we go. So as I mentioned, we're covering three things all at once. So first of all, the follow-up to the 2021 Comprehensive Plan Amendment process. As you're aware, you adopted a recommendation that went forward to council in May of passing the 2021 docket, and within that, though, you did ask for the ability to come back and review again the Energy and Climate Change Chapter implementation steps, if you'll recall. The Planning Commission did provide some very initial high-level responses back to Mr. Buwer. You guys did that little exercise where you went through the implementation steps and prioritized them. But when the council in July took their final action, they did, in fact, turn around and come back with asking you, as the Planning Commission, to actually develop a five-year implementation plan. So taking those implementation steps, reviewing them in a little more detail, and actually coming back to them with a recommended plan for the first five years of implementing the content of that new chapter. Mr. Buwer will be coming back to you with that in October, and we'll spend several meetings with you going over both things that he's compiled since the council took action, but also responding to the feedback that you have for him. The other two that are a follow-up also to the 21 package is that the Western Mass, uh, Western State Hospital, excuse me, master plan, we thought that this would have been completed in time to be reflected in the Comprehensive Plan this year, but they are just now going through the review process with the city for updating their complex at West, just across the street from Fort Silicon Park, but on their complex there, the changes that they're proposing to make, which are quite significant. They are proposing essentially to demolish what's currently there and rebuild, and change the type of patients that they have at Western State. So all of that is going through review right now, and once that's completed over the next six months, is a very, very rough guess, we'll be bringing that back to you again in 2022 as something to take a look at. Then, as a result of the 21 passage, if you'll recall, there was an application for some rezones in Tillicum, and that was expanded to actually say, yes, we'll do some rezoning right now, but city, it's time to take a look at the Tillicum Neighborhood Plan, which is 10 years old, as well as the designated Center of Local Importance in Tillicum, and see if that's still accurate as well. So that process is going to be starting this fall, and we'll be coming back to you as something to respond to, recommend, coming into next year's package. Any questions on the 2021?
No, see you then. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So the 2022 package, we can't ever get away from this complan cycle, has already begun, and during the timeframe between July 29th and August 20th, we did put out the call for applications to be included in that package. Once that process is done, everything comes back to you as a commission. You provide a recommendation on the docket list, and then that goes to City Council later this year for their approval. Once they take that action, that's all to set the list, and then we get into the substantive review, which will come back to the commission next spring. So as it stands, these are the applications that will be on your public hearing for next meeting. First of all, some of you are probably aware, there's been heightened interest in terms of tree preservation in the city of recent months, and there's been a lot of discussion at the City Council public meetings about this issue. They did ask that it be added to the 22 complan list, and so it will be taking a look at the current tree preservation code in language and policies in the Comprehensive Plan, particularly related to Gary Oaks. They are considered a significant tree, a tree to be preserved, and so that will be part of the conversation, but it will be the full tree preservation chapter and policies. And then there's also an action to just recognize the fact that there's about three acres of land next to St. Clair Hospital, which is intended to be preserved as a Gary Oak area. And so rezoning that to make sure that that is incorporated into public record. The second one will be that update to the Tillicum Neighborhood Plan and Center of Local Importance. The third is going to be kind of a two-part thing, and I'll talk about this again in your work plan for the next six or seven months. But the housing chapter within the Comprehensive Plan needs to be reviewed because of, in particular, some state bills that were passed this last legislative session. In particular, the bill number you'll hear over and over again is 1220, and it does have quite a few requirements within the bill, some of which Lakewood has already done. So we'll be able to just check off some boxes, but there are some things that the city needs to do to update that chapter within the Comprehensive Plan. Tied to that will be also a review of the programs that the housing side of our Community and Economic Development Department has. So the CDBG and Home Program, the Rental Housing Safety Program, and some other things that are going on within that side of the department, and just making sure everything is coordinated and up to date in relation to 1220, what's in our Comprehensive Plan, and then what, how those programs are administered. So both of those things will be coming to you again over the next six or seven months. The fourth application is related to adult family homes, and in particular, whether they should be located within the air corridor zones, air corridor one and two. This is really a policy issue related to whether or not the, um, the safety of those that are living and working within the air corridor zones, which right now is guided by a limit in the types of uses and the densities that are allowed in those zones, because they're underneath the air pattern of North McCord Airfield. Whether within that area and within those safety guidelines, it makes sense or not to put adult family homes, given who live in adult family homes. So that will be coming forward to you. Then, of course, with Vision 2050, the multi-county planning policies and the growth allocations that are within that from the Puget Sound Regional Council, that was adopted earlier this year. And so it's a matter of going through and making sure our Comprehensive Plan is consistent with that. And then the last one is really some cleanup from the last few cycles where there are some outdated maps related to urban focus areas, as well as maps of park facilities. And with the adoption of the Parks Legacy Plan last year, there's some updates that we need to do there. There were no, so far, city-initiated applications. This may change when this goes forward to council and they adopt the docket, they may want to add some items, and it's within your prerogative as well. So the Planning Commission wants to add anything, that would be something you would do before sending it over to the council. We did receive one application for a private rezone, and this is tied to, if you recall, last year, the Habitat for Humanity project within Tillicum. This is also tied to that continuing project, but because it is a single parcel, it's going to go through a different process. It's not going to go through Comprehensive Plan. There's a specific section in the municipal code that deals with single parcel rezones, so that'll be taken care of that way. So where we sit tonight is just simply this high-level introduction for you. Two weeks from tonight will be the public hearing on this list. October 6th would be when the commission could amend the list, if you would desire to do that, and then also provide your action recommendation on to the council. The council's scheduled to pick this up in late October and then take action by November 15th on the docket. It then comes back to our department, and we start the substantive review. So by next spring, we would be bringing the full list back to you for review, public hearing, and discussion and recommendation. So any questions on the 2022 package?
Mr. Larson?
At what point is it appropriate to add items to the docket for consideration in 2022?
You would be able to talk about that tonight, if you had an idea, just to get started. But after the public hearing, which will be your next meeting, it would be a matter of reacting to comments there, or if the, any of the commission members have something they want to add to the list, discuss that on October 6th.
Okay. What's on my mind is that the land between the railroad tracks, Burlington Northern and slash Sound Transit Railroad tracks, South Tacoma Way, south of Eightieth Street to Silicon Boulevard is divided into two zones that are based essentially along the property ownership lines. And I would submit that that is one area that has a given set of uses that amalgamate between the two different zones that are there, and that having one zone that with no property lines that we had to work across, if somebody wanted to combine parcels and make something larger and more efficient, they wouldn't have two sets of regulations, they were constantly having to juggle in order to work with it. And it seems as though it's a, a area of Lakewood that could use some consolidation of parcels that could make for more comprehensively efficient development.
So what I'll ask you to do, if you don't mind, is send a message either to the chair or to myself, just kind of summarizing what you just said, and then that can be included for your future discussion.
Yes. So you'd like me to follow, follow that up with a memo?
Yep.
Okay.
Great. Happy to do that.
Yep, thank you. Any other, Mr. Pearson, do you have anything? Nope, okay, great, hearing or seeing none, continue on, Miss Spear.
Thank you. I'll check, there's something in the chat. Okay, just making sure I wasn't missing anything there. So we're going to jump now to your work plan, which, if you remember, earlier this year was approved by the City Council. Partly what you just heard, but other discussions that have happened since then has kind of changed the scope and depth of what you're going to be talking about for the next six to seven months. And I'm smiling under here, if you can't tell. Laughing at you. Nope. So just to summarize for you really quickly, again, the five-year implementation plan, that's something that, basically, the first step was taken when you looked at all those implementation steps and prioritized them for Mr. Buwer. He will be coming to you in October with some initial ideas that you can react to, take apart, do with what you will in order to create a five-year implementation plan for the City Council. Secondly, well, again, is that housing program and policy and Comprehensive Plan discussion. And so this is pretty broad, as well as deep. It is what's in the Comprehensive Plan, there's a whole chapter about housing, but then there's also the Title 18A Development Regulations. There's the CDBG and Home Program, there's a Rental Housing Safety Program, and other administrative policies. And this is one where we may actually pull in the Community Services Advisory Board to work with you on this. They are the group that deals with human services particularly, but one of the priorities for them right now is housing. And so we thought maybe it would, it would benefit both groups to be able to talk about this together. And then again, the 22 complan cycle, tree preservation, adult family homes, Tillicum, the housing stuff specifically related to the Comprehensive Plan. So I won't go through this in great detail, but just to show you, and this is in your package, if you want to take a look at it, spend some time on it. This is the predicted schedule over the next several months. This, of course, is subject to change, but we'll start with getting through the 22 docket, and then next meeting, you'll start talking about that adult family home question in the air corridor zones. Then there'll be, in October, the continuation and completion of those two topics. Starting on October 20th, you'll have the Energy and Climate Change Five-Year Plan. There is a potential for some public hearings on several development projects, and that will be up to Mr. Buwer to decide if that will actually happen in front of you. Yes, it will happen in front of you. It's. Okay, all right, so to be determined. It's kind of an unusual process, which is why we're not sure if it's coming to you or not. In November, we'll start the home and housing discussion. There'll also be some information brought to you regarding the American Rescue Plan Act and how the city of Lakewood will be using those dollars. The City Council is into that right now. There's actually a public hearing about that next Monday. And so if you have any questions about that, feel free to, to send them my way on the project lead on that, so I can provide you information there. And then we'll also be talking in November about the tree preservation question. Coming to December, energy and climate change, hopefully that will be at the point of where you can wrap that up. Looking again at Tillicum, and that will be potentially the first and the 15th. It'll be up to you if you want to meet on the 15th or not. I know that's getting close to holidays, but if we can use that meeting, it'll help with the schedule overall. Oops. Looking into next year, the first meeting of the year usually is, is procedural in nature, meaning people are elected into positions, you may have a new member, and then we'll just give you an update as to where we are with the development of the 22 complan amendment language. January 19th, we'll get back into the housing policies and programs. Again, in February, you might have the Community Services Advisory Board here with you. February 16th, we'll take a break on all of that stuff and get into some of the buildable lands and growth target things that come to the city every once in a while about how much we're supposed to be planning to grow, both on the housing side and jobs. Then, if you remember, every year in the spring, we have a step back to the Shoreline Master Program and see what kind of restoration activities have happened over the last year. And then we're into, believe it or not, another two-year review of the downtown plan. It's been, I can't believe it's been that long. Anyway, we'll talk about whether or not there's any changes needed to the downtown subarea plan. Getting into April and May, then we'll pick up the, the 22 docket substantively. You guys will make your review, have your hearing and recommendation on to council by mid-May. So any questions on the work plan?
Any questions? Nope. Seeing I have one is the elections of the new commissioner. So is that going to be not until the, not the election, excuse me, the appointment of a new commissioner? Is that going to wait and clear until January? Is that a?
Well, what I can tell you is that Mr. Guerrero's letter of resignation was effective immediately, and you have it in your packet, because he was actually appointed to the county's planning commission. And so it's really up to the council, the mayor, to decide when they want to do that, given the amount of time left this year versus next year, and how long it takes them to get applications in. It may be next year before you see a new member.
Okay.
But that was just done. I haven't heard yet from the city clerk whether the mayor's going to take it up prior to next year.
Okay, and then I did notice that Connie, Ms. Lackady, is, her term is expiring, so, as well, I think at the end of this year, it looks like. So if, if staff could send me a new, the dates of all of the expiration dates and stuff like that, that would be nice.
Sure.
To have. And I think that was it for right now. Any other questions? No, seeing none. Geez, awful quiet. Mr. Buwer?
Just two things. The first one is, as you're working on the climate change piece, the goal is to attempt to try to come together with some sort of a work plan. What's also going on behind the scenes is we're working on a proposed budget for a sustainability office with two employees. And so, once that office is created, the climate change process will probably be shifted to someone else other than myself and a few others. And it may also end up in the city manager's office. That's too yet to be determined. But I wanted to let you know that there is a method to the madness behind this, and that's why we're working on, on the work plan for climate change. Also, the direction from the council was to start on work plan items that were simple to implement and start easy and slow, and then get into the more complicated stuff as we gain a better understanding of this. That assignment may also change, and it may not be something that the commission is involved in later. But for now, this board is taking the lead. Another thing that's kind of going on is the city's applied for a request for proposal with the Evans School of Policy, and the purpose of which is to address climate change with a proposed survey, which would be initiated in January and in, in May. That proposal includes this planning commission working with the land, with the Parks Board in developing survey questions and a whole series of other assignments. So in addition to everything else that Tiffany mentioned, there is something else that you will be working. will be working on. So I'll, I'll conclude with that.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions by staff? No other questions? All right, Miss Spear is, that's completes that. We have any reports from staff or from Mr. Boki? Nothing tonight?
The only thing I will mention a little bit more is the American Rescue Plan Act work that's going on. The city of Lakewood received 13.76, or 7.7 million, I should say, and we are in the process of, after gathering several months' worth of community engagement feedback from public, the general public, from businesses, from government agencies, from non-governmental organizations that work in the city, their recommendations and ideas about how those dollars should be spent. So an initial study session was held with the city council on August 23rd, and that information was provided to them, along with some initial ideas of how to spend the dollars. So as I mentioned, there's a public hearing coming this next Monday night, where we may hear from some of the people we reached out to and spoke with during that community engagement, or there may be others that testify. But the council is wanting to really be responsive to what the city is, as a whole, is recognizing as priorities. There are rules to play within, with ARPA, of course, but other than that, the city actually has quite a bit of discretion as to how it spends the dollars. So there are two buckets of money, if you will, they call them tranches. One is already received by the city, and the other will be available a year from now. And whether the council spends it all right now or not, they actually have until the end of 2024 to identify what to spend money on. It can be everything from personal protective equipment right now for emergency workers to, it could be infrastructure improvements, it could be concentrating dollars within what are called disproportionately impacted communities within the city, so might not surprise you, but those have been identified in Lakewood as Tillicum, Woodbrook, Springbrook, Lakeview, and Montevista, so some of the poorer areas of the city, most historically underrepresented in all kinds of things. But there's other ways that the city could be spending the, the funding as well. So there's quite a range of things that have been presented to council as preliminary options. They will, at the very least, on September 20th, make a decision about policies and priority direction back to staff. So when we put out the call for applications from people, businesses, and again, the government partners that we have, they'll understand the rules to play by, and then we'll be making the, the decisions per council direction, how soon money's going to start to go out the door. Last year with the CARES Act or the Coronavirus Relief Fund money, it was really fast, it was try to get it out as soon as possible. This is a much more deliberative process, where, like I said, it, it's up to four years for the council, or three years to decide how to spend the money, and so they're, they're getting into the details as we speak.
Great.
That was it.
Ms. Connie?
So I have a question. I noticed, and we have two chats and two questions, are we going to address those before we close tonight?
Two, I'm sorry?
There's two chats and two questions.
There's your chats, asking about using the mask. And the question and answer, talking about building the street from Tillicum to Lakewood, and how would these new changes impact the low impact, or low-income neighborhoods?
So are you going to answer them offline?
I was planning to, yeah. Unless the, the planning commission wants to answer them right now.
Any questions or any other comments from the fellow commissioners? Mr. Wegman?
On the plan for the future, one of the areas that you mentioned that we'll probably covering is open areas that we can build on and those kind of things, and then I just tied that in with Mr. Speed's comment earlier, that we want to have single-family residents or those kind of comments, but if we stay within the Growth Management Act and we don't have a whole lot of space to build things, we're, we're kind of forced into vertical kind of things, which are more apartment buildings and those kinds of things. So do, do we need to have another briefing on Growth Management Act, or as, as we talk through, somehow, you know, we've got some new people on the commission, it might be worth having a discussion there again, I, I think.
I think that's going to happen in any event when we get into the housing chapter, and also looking to see if our comprehensive plan is consistent with Vision 2050, it's going to come up in a couple of different venues. One of the other things I should have mentioned, I guess, is that Lakewood Landing, which is one of the big economic development projects that was identified in the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan, they've actually had a purchase and sale agreement get underway for Phase One of that project, and it will be housing units, potentially a mixed-use project going in there. So we're starting right now already with the implementation of that subarea plan, which really does emphasize affordable housing for the city.
It's, it's one of, it's one of those tough questions.
Yeah.
You know, you have so much land, and what, once that land is used up, and if you have to keep adding population, vertical, so anyhow.
Correct.
Any activity in the, in the downtown, in our, our area here, any activity of, you know, housing or businesses, any new updates on that?
Well, in the Lakeview Station District, the city council did approve two multifamily tax housing exemption programs, one for 50 units and the other one, I believe, for 14. That's not in the downtown, per se, but it's, it's nearby. One of those would be on 108th, where the, the existing white church is located, that would be demolished and replaced with units. And the other one is a proposed 14, 15-unit townhouse behind St. Clair. And as you may be aware of, the city is in litigation on the old QFC site. There was recently a zoning certification issued that would allow for mixed-use development and several hundred new multifamily units with a structure up to a height of 90 feet. Whether or not that moves forward remains to be seen, but at the moment, it is an active project that we have reviewed and provided general comments. If they move forward and go through the form-based code review, then building permits would be issued, but also includes the, or construction of a, I believe, a two-story garage for parking as well. So it's a very significant project. We'll see if it moves forward, but we did issue zoning certification on that project. Becky Newton is also pursuing a, a variety of contaminated sites in the downtown. There's work going on about approximately five sites, when specifically at, at the intersection of Gravely Lake Drive and Silicon Boulevard. There's also some existing abatement actions proposed in the downtown as well, that would get rid of some old tired buildings and replace some with something else. Those are some of the things that I can think of off the top of my head.
Great.
But it does remain fairly active, and we'll see what happens in the next couple of years. Other people have assembled property and have been waiting to decide whether or not they wish to pursue a some mixed-use development on Gravely Lake Drive.
Great. Great, thank you so much. Any other things? I didn't see any other things on our agenda tonight. Seeing or hearing, Mr. Pearson, anything? Oh, yeah, Mr. Coons?
I just had a follow-up on the QFC site. I'm unfamiliar with the background on it, maybe the rest of the commission's familiar with it, but what's the, what's the matter that we're trying to resolve?
City deemed the building, there's actually two structures, unsafe, and declared it a, a dangerous building, and was moving in the direction of either having the owner demolish it, or the city would demolish it. The owner disagreed that it was unsafe. We went to the hearing examiner, a hearing examiner agreed with the city that it was a dangerous building. From there, it did go to Superior Court, Superior Court Judge indicated that she did not believe it, it met the, was a dangerous building. And then the owner initiated a lawsuit, and things have slowed down, and the city issued the zoning certification, and because it is, there's a potential for litigation on this, I choose not to say anymore. But, but it's possibility that some of the litigation will disappear, we'll see what happens. And there are some underlying zoning issues with illegal uses on, use of the property. Owner's been fined several thousand dollars, use has been removed, since I've taken action to secure the site, remove the graffiti. So it's an ongoing challenge.
Yeah. Thank, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, hearing or seeing, no other questions? Okay, no other questions at this time? We'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.